Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting for August 5th, 2024. We do have two items this evening to start with before we go to the official meeting. And the first one, we have pulled the general item to present a very special award this evening. We have the Spirit of America recognition, and tonight we are presenting that to Ernest Merrill III. The 2024 Spirit of America Award winner, Ernie Merritt III. Whereas Ernie started making canes for the city of Saco around 2015, and has given out approximately 10 canes to Saco's oldest citizens. And whereas Ernie also makes and donates his canes to anyone that is in need of one, totaling approximately 100 canes donated. And whereas, for the past 16 years, Ernie has also volunteered as a facilitator for the Chronic Pain Support Group of Southern Maine. And whereas, Ernie often works on a volunteer basis with doctors, researchers, and other medical professionals to share his knowledge of the hardships endured by people living with chronic pain. And whereas, Ernie's selfless donation of time and energy in creating his beautiful handcrafted canes, as well as his commitment in supporting people living with chronic pain, promotes hope, understanding, and recognition for our community members. Now therefore I, Jody L. McPhail, Mayor of Saco, on behalf of the City Council hereby resolves with sincere gratitude and appreciation that Ernest Merrill III is recognized for his commitment to our community with the 2024 Spirit of America Foundation Award. Signed this 5th day of August, 2024.
Not usually on this end of it.
I had the pleasure just a couple of months ago of presenting one of Ernie's canes to the Wardwell, to two residents, and they were extremely grateful, and they were absolutely beautiful. So again, thank you from all of us. Okay, so that now takes us to the next item, and we do have a quick workshop presentation. And that is a presentation by GP Cog on the Zero Vision, which was requested by the B-PAC, the Bicycle Pedestrian. And Emily, who do we have with us this evening?
Thank you. I'm pleased to present Chris.
Alex, do we have the speakers on? Actually, is mine even coming through?
Are we on?
Yep, we're on.
There we go.
All right, thank you. I'm pleased to present Chris Chop, who's the Transportation Director for GP Cog and PACC. That's Greater Portland Council of Governments and Portland Area Comprehensive Transportation System. Saco is part of PACC, so we thought this presentation would be helpful, and our BikePed Advisory Committee also asked that you receive a Vision Zero presentation. Similar presentations have been had in Scarborough and in other communities, so I think it will be very useful. And I appreciate your listening in and asking any questions.
Thanks for the introduction, Emily, and good evening, everyone. I'm on a bit of a roadshow. Emily took care of the acronyms and alphabet soup of GP Cog and PACC already, but as she said, Saco's a member, and thanks for having me, Madam Mayor and members of the council, here tonight to talk about the Region's Vision Zero Action Plan, which was adopted by the PACC's Policy Board last year. So first off, what's Vision Zero? Why are we talking about it now? Vision Zero is a philosophy, it's a commitment to ensuring that there are no roadway fatalities or serious injuries on our roadway network. It really started up in Sweden in the 1990s, gained steam across Europe, and now has spread and gained traction in the United States. And there's communities across the country embracing this philosophy, as well as regions, like the PACC's region. So here to give a quick introduction on that. One of the reasons why we're doing it, and why we're doing it now, and why it's so important, is that we've seen an alarming spike of fatalities and serious injuries in our region over the past couple of years, but really trending up from since... Sorry, let me close out this box. Okay, so on this chart, we're looking at total crashes, fatal and severe injuries by year from 2016 to 2023, and then the rate, the number of fatal and severe injuries per 100 crashes. And you can see the spike in recent years. We had, we saw fatalities go down in the region in 2020. Fewer cars on the road, people were driving less, right? First year of the pandemic, but the rate was actually really high. So we saw alarming numbers of distracted driving, aggressive driving, speeding, related injuries and fatalities. And then from there, '21, '22, '23, the numbers kept going up. So it was time to think about a different way to approach the transportation system, which was kind of a catalyst for us in our region. It's showing as red on the... Okay, there we go, it's going. Another thing we've seen over the past decade or so is a huge spike in pedestrian fatalities. In 2010, there were 4,100 pedestrian fatalities across the country. 12 years later, 7,500, almost doubling in that decade or so. And that's a pedestrian every 70 minutes in the United States. Vehicles have become a lot safer. We've got all sorts of great safety features on vehicles, lane departure assist, better airbags, just safer cars and trucks in general. They've become bigger, too. There's a lot of schools and communities around the country that have done demonstrations like this one on the screen, where they put a bunch of kids in front of a large vehicle and to detect how much of a blind spot there is for that driver. And in this case, there's nine kids sitting in front of this car, and the driver couldn't see any of them. The driver could only see a kid when the first kid, dressed in red and looking down at the ground, came up into the 10th spot. So it's just a thing to keep in mind, that vehicles have gotten safer, they've gotten bigger, which is compounded by distracted driving and speeding that we'll look at in a minute. Distracted driving counts for about 10% of fatalities that we know about. And speed is a major issue. Pedestrians' chance of surviving a crash at 20 miles an hour is about 90%. When they're struck by a vehicle at 40 miles an hour, that plummets to 20%. So you can see the relationship between speed and survivability in this case. And humans are vulnerable. Pedestrians and cyclists across the country represent about 2% of all crashes, but they represent about 25% of the fatal and severe injury crashes. And it's no different in our region. When we looked at it, we looked at motorcyclists, cyclists, pedestrians, about 4% of all crashes. They were 40% of the fatal and severe injury crashes. And so we need a new approach. I'm not going to go into detail on what the traditional approach versus Vision Zero. I think the big things to point out here are that Vision Zero is really focused on preventing the severe crashes and the crashes resulting in fatalities. In the past, we've looked at kind of all crashes, and maybe focused on crash data for a particular intersection, but maybe there weren't fatalities or severe injuries. Maybe it was pretty low speeds and property damage only. Vision Zero tries to shift that to thinking more about preventing those severe injury and fatal crashes. And another thing is, traditionally, we've been very quick to point, as a society, we've been very quick to point who's at fault in a given crash. He was driving too fast. She was crossing at an unmarked location, jaywalking. He wasn't wearing reflective gear at night. Vision Zero kind of shifts that and thinks more systematically, kind of shifting the responsibility to all owners and maintainers and operators of the transportation system, because we all play a role in that. And summary, Vision Zero, safe road users, safe vehicles, safe speeds, safe roads, post-crash care. This is also known by U.S. Department of Transportation as the Safe Systems Approach. And you can see a quote from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, "Safety is an ethical imperative, the designers and owners of the transportation system." All right, shifting gears to the Region's Action Plan. So again, it was adopted by PACC's Policy Board last year. When we started out, we went out into the community. We interviewed strangers on the street, at farmers' markets, and we asked, "Have you ever been in a serious crash, or do you know anyone that has?" And we got a lot of sobering stories, as you'd imagine. This is a quote from Tammy, who's a resident of Bedford. And Tammy lost her daughter to a distracted driver a number of years ago. And Tammy's quoted here, saying, "To the people out there, come together, make a change, so we can have zero deaths." And this video is on the Vision Zero Greater Portland website. It's two minutes, interviews with different community members. And then we did a lot of data analysis. We looked at where the worst crashes have happened, again, fatal, severe injuries. So this is kind of a snippet of the southern subregion in PACC. And you can see in Saco, you've got 95, you've got North slash 112, you've got Route 1, and then it looks like a small segment of industrial parkway as well on this. And we combined that, and then we looked separately at where crashes are more likely to occur. And this is based on different roadway characteristics, number of lanes, speed limit, lane width. And we're able to do some, make an educated kind of assessment of where the higher-risk areas are. And a lot of the same areas, frankly, light up in the city of Saco. 112, 1, industrial park, segment of 195 in here as well. We also asked the community, "Where do you feel unsafe?" And this is just a very high-level map. I'm just kind of showing the concentration of markers that folks put in a community mapping exercise. You can see, like, downtown Saco and Bedford both show up here. And then we looked at traditionally transportation disadvantaged communities as defined by the U.S. Department of Transportation as well. There's a couple of census tracts in Bedford. And we layered that all together to come up with critical safety corridors and critical safety intersections. So again, we've got 112 North on this, we've got Route 1 in the city of Saco, and a couple intersections as well, just down the street, Route Main, Main Elm and 112 North. And then I think that's Route 1 in Thornton, near the U-Haul facility, I believe, is number 29 on this map. And then in terms of solutions, I'll go pretty quickly through this section, because I want to be sensitive to time. But one of the things we heard from community members going to the public stakeholder forums was design and redesigning our roadways to prioritize safety. That was the number-one thing we heard from the public, and it wasn't really, there wasn't really a super-close second. It's something we heard from the Wyndham Police Chief. It's something we heard from the Scarborough Police Chief in conversations, that they don't have the police force to enforce our way out of this problem. We need to do more, we need to think proactively, we need upstream solutions in redesigning our roads to prioritize safety. So I just mentioned why we needed a different approach, the upstream solution, which can help control speed, mitigate speed, mitigate human error and behavior by redesigning our roads a bit. It can also reconnect communities. A lot of the roadways that are problematic in our region are urban arterials, like bisecting neighborhoods, going through communities. Traffic calming measures, slowing cars down, can help kind of stitch communities back together as well. And there's certainly an emphasis at the federal level in doing that as well. And a lot of transportation funding out there through the bipartisan infrastructure law for projects that are involving traffic calming. And this is all to say, you know, enforcement, education, policy coordination. There's other really important ways and ingredients to getting to zero, but just kind of focusing on design, and that was the priority from our action plan. Some examples, and these are, you can find these, a lot of these on U.S. Department of Transportation's website, but they assign certain benefits to different types of roadway improvements in a community. So in this case, crosswalk visibility enhancements, things that Saco uses, installed in the median can actually prevent or reduce pedestrian crashes by 25%. Rapid rectangular flashing beacons, RRFBs, a little bit more expensive, but can reduce pedestrian crashes, 47%. Pedestrian refuge islands, place to provide pedestrians a safe place when crossing particularly large, wide urban streets. Roundabouts have tremendous safety impacts if you've got the space for them. 78% reduction in fatal and injury crashes when converting a signalized intersection to a roundabout, mainly because cars are forced to go pretty slowly through roundabouts. So some local examples, on North Street, you've got bike lanes that are really well-marked. Possibly when you put these in, you might have narrowed your general travel lanes as well. Got curb extensions, you've had these forever in the city of Saco on Main Street, but it's shortening the pedestrian crossings. And it's also slowing vehicles down, because you're visually narrowing the roadway in that regard. Gorham Road near Route 1 in Scarborough, this is 2011, really wide road, a lot of asphalt. It's really straight, so cars naturally, motorists naturally, are more inclined to speed on a road like this. And they kind of reconfigured that, put in the center median island to, again, calm traffic a little bit. Thornton Heights, up the road, Route 1, South Portland, used to look like this. It wasn't really friendly for cyclists, pedestrians, and frankly motorists either. They reconfigured that area as well, Thornton Heights. They put in bike lanes, they shortened pedestrian crossings. They did what you have on Main Street with the curb extensions or bumpouts. And then there's a lot of paint and temporary materials that you're using here, that we're using around the region, that we're trying to invest more into as what we call demonstration projects. So it could be anything, as simple as art installations at crosswalks to call attention to pedestrian activity in the area. Could be like you have on North Street and Garfield Street with temporary traffic calming measures, preventing left turns on a really busy road. This I found interesting, at North in Spring, you've got the pedestrian flags, where a pedestrian can grab a flag, be a little bit more visible when crossing, and then return the flag after they've crossed. We're seeing that across the country in certain cases, too. Got paint signage on Seaview and Bayside. Here, you've got that movable pedestrian sign, again, to alert motorists that there's pedestrians in the area. You also have paint on the right side of this photo. You've got paint kind of curving around to the parking lot that is proximate to the beach. And what that is doing there is it's preventing cars from taking really fast right turns out of that parking lot and hitting a pedestrian in a really busy crosswalk that's taking pedestrians from a parking lot to the beach. So I thought that was a good example. Westbrook's done some traffic calming as well. So here, they're creating temporary curb extensions, basically, with paint and bollards, these flexible posts with reflective tape on the top, shortening the crossing, making it safer and slowing motorists down. South Portland did the same thing on Broadway. This is Portland, Woodford's Corner, Revere Street. They've got the art installations on the crosswalks, but they also have those red painted areas that are bounded by those flexible posts, kind of like you're seeing in this next photo in Minnesota, again, shortening the pedestrian crossing, narrowing the roadway, at least visually, for motorists. Minnesota have got a crosswalk, kind of removable crosswalk, removable crosswalk. And there's a lot of funding opportunities out there as well. U.S. DOT has their Safe Roads, Streets and Roads for All program, $5 billion over five years of the infrastructure bill, and bipartisan infrastructure law. And then Maine DOT and PACC have different resources and administer different funding sources to help implement either really temporary improvements, demonstration projects, or going bigger with heavier infrastructure options. Final thoughts for me, data's really important, especially if you're applying for federal grants. They'll want to see that the projects that you're advancing are, that there's data supporting how those investments are justifiable and how those investments will bring safety benefits. And then they'll also want to see, you know, a lot of public engagement, community engagement. And it's okay to explore options. There's different tools in the toolbox for different types of projects and different types of issues. You can combine certain ones. It's okay to experiment. Demonstration projects do just that. You're able to collect a lot of data from before, and then during and after, to see, you know, did this do what it was supposed to do? And then, if so, maybe invest in more permanent infrastructure. Last but not least, we're here to help at GP Cog. If you have any questions or need technical assistance, or want to, you know, discuss different paths to funding priority projects in the city of Saco. different paths to funding priority projects in the city of Saco. So thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all have, appreciate you having me.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. I thought that was really, really great and informative, and really set out the problem really well. The examples were really useful also. Really, I guess, a question about the role that PAX plays. Do you, what role can you play in helping Saco identify more locations, more sites? Do you make suggestions for potential improvements at high-risk intersections? Can you play a role in helping acquire funding and identifying funding sources? What role can you play as we move forward on this?
Yeah, good question. Yeah, PAX does, is mainly involved in the planning side of things. So we've got a budget for planning projects, it's a two-year portfolio of plans and studies. So Saco's got a study funded through that effort, through PAX, on Portland Road, that's coming up soon. And so that's one avenue for doing some additional planning and data analysis. We also have the grant through the Safe Streets for All program, specifically for demonstration projects. And the city of Saco team did put in some different pilot projects to take a look at, so we'll be working with you all to roll those out in the next couple of years. There's a lot across the region, and it's, I think we've got four years to spend the funds. So that's two ways. On the investment side, yeah, we work pretty closely with Main DOT on prioritizing projects that get into Main DOT's work plan. And so the more a city prioritizes its own investments, the better chances you'll have with getting funding through that work plan, because it shows that you've gone through the, frankly, like, a tough stage of prioritizing projects with limited funding. And that's something I know Main DOT wants to see from communities, and something we look at, too. So hopefully that helps a little bit.
Great, thank you. Anyone else, Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate the presentation. I have a couple of comments and questions, and I guess I'm looking at them, and I think two of them may be directed at Emily, if I could. And Emily, you've taught me a lot about the work it takes to get ordinances shaped and in place and effective. But my first question is, how is street design migrating its way into our ordinance so that we can, in fact, empower our planning department and our planning board with ordinances that can effectively start shifting the dial a little bit to better street design? I know there are limitations, I mean, this city's been here several hundred years, so we can't just tear everything apart and replace it, but I do think that we probably should be heading in that direction. So that's question one, and I'll give you the second question, and you can answer for me. My understanding is we have a traffic study, a citywide traffic study being undertaken, as well as the Portland Road. And when that is completed, will we be presented with some options that would, again, help us swing the pendulum to greater traffic, safety, pedestrian safety?
Yes, thank you, if I can address those questions, Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
So the first question, how do we build this into our ordinances, is we have to do the good work on the transportation master plan, which Planning and Public Works is working on, and I encourage you all to participate in our first public event activity tomorrow at National Night Out. It'll be a high-level activity, but it'll be our first public engagement opportunity. So that will be the first step to really inform not only prioritization for the city, also potential impact fee study and structure, and will really help us hone in on, like Chris said here, prioritization projects going forward, which will then also inform your planning proposals coming up, and will help us to better align where we are going to be collecting impact fees for critical transportation initiatives within a corridor. We thought this was a good opportunity, we were glad VP PAC brought this presentation to our attention, but we also thought it was a good opportunity to bring forward. Patrick Fox has sat on the policy committee and has been a leader on that committee, so did some work with the region on this Vision Zero plan. And we were glad to be able to get your support for the transportation master plan, so we can start heading in this direction, more systems thinking and working among different departments. And then as far as the Portland Road study, which is, has UPWP funding to it, Unified Planning Work Program funding from PAX, that has started, we did our first initial meeting with the Long Range Planning Committee. We now have a scope of work with the folks at PAX and GP-COG, and we'll be working on, like, the zoning analysis portion, that has a land use piece as well as a transportation piece. They, two studies will have different scope of work, the scopes of work, they'll be running somewhat parallel paths, but that's going to inform, really, the, hone in on the Route 1 and inform what we do there.
Great, thank you. I'm glad that we're moving in that direction, so that's great, great news.
And there'll be a public opportunity along the way, as well as opportunity for counselors to comment, of course.
Great, thank you. And then the last comment I'm going to make, because I've made it several times here, is that as I try to observe these safety issues, I've had numerous conversations with Chief Clemens about this, you know, this enforcement has become a challenge for us, and so I think that we need to continue to step out of the box here. It's been my observation that it's virtually impossible to legislate responsible behavior, but we need to figure out ways in which we can hold individuals accountable to the rules, the safety rules that we put in place. And it's a very difficult challenge, and I think we need to be incorporating enforcement in our overall conversation, and I guess I'm addressing the council, as we move forward with these initiatives, because it's going to be very, very important to us. So thank you for that work.
Thank you, and I will also say that Chief Clemens is part of our Long Range Planning Committee, and we really appreciate his work on that group.
Great, thank you. Anyone else, Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, both, for the presentation from GP-COG and, you know, an update from city staff. Just, I guess, an overall comment for this topic, I certainly think myself, I think most of councilor here would agree that this is, at the very least, a top-five issue facing the community. And so it's great to hear about design, I think that having been an avid walker my entire life, I could really point out how bad design has been. And obviously, that's an area for improvement. But equally as important, if not more so, in my personal opinion, is human behavior, right? And so that's its own challenge, but one I think we need to equally work towards. I mean, really, I think about it, and perhaps Marshall, you'll appreciate this, or Counselor Archer, but I go back to my time in the Marine Corps, and it was, you know, drilled into us, certainly in Iraq, was, you know, hearts and mind, getting to the children in order to have, or do away with that anti-American sentiment. Same thing, this is a generational issue. I don't know when it occurred, but certainly over the last 20, 30 years of my life, people, drivers, they're terrible. I mean, and we're all drivers at times, and certainly, you know, I've said before, having served 10 years on traffic safety, it has made me cognizant of how I drive in every section of Saco, because I hear frequently what Ward 4 is dealing with, what other wards are dealing with, so now I drive through there going, oh yeah, I have that specific point to refer to. So again, it's kind of like climate change, it's that same thing where if we're going to make a marked improvement, it really starts at, you know, my kid's age, I don't know if we do it through the classrooms, but we gotta, again, why are we making those changes? We're making those changes because the pattern hasn't been effective for drivers to say there's pedestrians or the bicyclists are in those areas. So now we are at this point, you know, as I said at a recent traffic safety meeting, it's like, we're just throwing signs up everywhere, when my whole life, that hash-marked crosswalk was a crosswalk. Now all of a sudden, I've got to paint it, I've got to put signs all over the place, because people apparently don't think it's a crosswalk. And it's frustrating for me, and I'm sure it is for, you know, longtime staff members as we deal with these issues, because, again, it's the basic traffic laws, traffic laws we all learned, and here we are, you know, looking at reinventing the wheel, I guess. But, yeah, I just, I think we need to educate, and I don't know if it's, you know, scare tactics that certainly was applied when I was a child, like the DARE program, with this is your, you know, this is your brain, this is your brain on drugs, but it did work, it was effective for me. So, you know, maybe we, we certainly need to talk about it more, I guess, at least at council level, you know, recognize when accidents happen, and acknowledge people either, you know, lost their life, or had serious bodily harm, or even property damage, so just, thank you.
Counselor Gunn, then Counselor Berman?
Well, I'd like to thank, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Chris.
Chris, Chris, thank you, and on behalf of GP-COG and PAX for coming to Saco, because I always say to people, you know, if not for the county line, though, I always think of us as being part of the Greater Portland area, though, and the fact that you're able to focus on things that any local know are difficult areas where people in this city put their lives on their hands on a daily basis just to navigate. So I thank you for paying attention to our city and noticing things that we, as locals, notice on the daily. Now, I'm not sure if you're aware about this, but hopefully you are, that at city level, we have been envisioning, or planning board, really, is more envisioning, our city planners have been envisioning, a gateway from Bedford to Saco as a way of sort of slowing down that traffic on Saco Island, trying to make a little bit more user-friendly between the development that's already happened, and the development's going to happen on Saco Island East. But that being said, it also brings in, our Long Range Planning Committee is having conversations about how we're going to re-envision at least the two-thirds of Portland Road until you get to the 195 overpass, to sort of make that part of Route 1 sort of make sense as a sort of community, or at least a village sort of, I'm just spitballing, like, how Wells has sort of subdivided their section, so it's not just, you can't just blow through Wells at 50 miles an hour. And this comes on the back of us approving a new school that's going to be there, because otherwise, why would you have a school in a high-traffic area, even though it's off the road, if you're not going to have at least some semblance of a community there? So these are long-term, long-range things that we're talking about. But in terms of the traffic mitigation, or the traffic safety methods that you've described, though, because while I'm a big proponent of education, and of course, again, if it was up to me, I would seriously increase the level of education needed for driver's permits, maybe re-education at some point in life, though, because it really, at this point, it's become a cultural thing, and there's really no ignoring that. But that being said, being able to change the physical construction or configuration of the road doesn't allow people, unless they're truly psychotic, and I use that term loosely, to just completely disregard traffic. So I appreciate the idea that we can put up physical mitigation efforts to try to protect people. My question is, and it's really more of a question I anticipate, as cities such as Saco go forward, and expand, and build out, and fill in, you're going to have folks who, perhaps these are the same folks, or an echo of what you saw in Portland in the '60s and the '70s when they said, you need Franklin arterial, you need State Street to be one-way, you need these sort of mini interstates in your communities to get in and out, otherwise your city clogs to a complete stop, and there's no way to get in and out and function in the city. For a community our size, certainly you have North Street, 112, Portland Road, to a lesser extent unofficially, maybe the Jenkins, Flagpole, Hearn, where Heath's sort of backway in and out, and certainly the way into Old Orchard. So there's about four or five different ways in and out of the city. I anticipate, as we go forward, there will be pushback against, by folks who want to see those roadways stay at least configured as they are, predominantly focused towards cars, and maybe they'll make a concession for bikes, though, but they'll say, no, it's meant for in and out of the city. So how, as a practical matter, because obviously you folks up in Portland deal with this, and this is your resonair, how do you deal with that pushback, that balance between having functioning roads to keep your city functioning, and the necessary things you have to do for safety? Because this is a big lift, that, you know, at the planning level, on a daily basis, we're like, is this where we slow down traffic, does it make sense here? Or are we just, you know, cutting off our nose to spite our face? So anything that you can offer to the conversation, since we got you here, please?
It's difficult.
Yeah, no doubt.
So it's all about trade-offs. And certainly a conversation we've been having a lot with Main DOT on these, like, bigger arterial roadways, roads that they often own and operate, like a Route 1 in this part of the region. So I think some of it is accepting some level of diminished vehicular level of service, which is a fancy, you know, engineering way to say the throughput of a road, and how many cars it can carry, and at what speed. Some level of acceptance that some of these measures may have, you know, consequences for motorist flow and the speeds that they're able to travel on a corridor. And being honest and candid about that, and putting the trade-offs out there for the public and for decision-makers to kind of weigh, like, does it make sense to accept, you know, a little bit of reduced level of service in order to get the promise of a safer roadway for all transportation users, motorists, cyclists, pedestrians? Those are tough questions, but, you know, ones that have to be asked in a pretty candid way, so that you're mitigating surprises, you know, later on, when you actually follow through with an investment. So that's hard. Obviously, if you've got alternatives, it makes it a lot easier. You do have 95, you've got the turnpike, so to the extent we can get more cars on the turnpike, especially the pass-through traffic that you don't want clogging up your roadways, the better off, and the better off for the turnpike authority as well, with toll revenue. So finding that, and some of that might relate back to education, and, you know, what roads are best suited for different types of trips. But it's hard, it's really hard. I know I didn't completely answer your question, but did my best.
Appreciate the effort, because like I said, this is, that's the big balance, though, but, yeah, I appreciate it, thank you.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Hearing the discussion of my fellow counselors, and I'm excited to hear a lot of the interest in this, some communities formally adopt a Vision Zero strategy, and then become a Vision Zero community, publicly stating to themselves, to staff, and to the public, that we're committed to these principles, and it sounds like maybe that's something that we'd want to think about in the future. One of the things that I really appreciate about Vision Zero is, we've had some discussion about the difficulty in changing human behavior, and getting individuals to comply, and how to enforce it. But of course, as I understand, Vision Zero strategy, it's really about using engineering to alter human behavior, right? It's not putting the onus on that individual, but it's creating structures and systems that lead to safer driving through narrowing, through visibility, through creating obstacles to risky, high-speed, dangerous situations. And these are time-tested, you know, data-driven, effective solutions that have been adopted elsewhere, and so it really encourages us to start thinking that way, and adopting some of those strategies as we move things forward. And I think part of the point is it does slow traffic, and motorists may complain about that, but that's not a negative thing, that's the purposeful thing, is that we'll drive slower, and in driving slower, we may push people towards active transit or mass transit, which is better for the environment. When you make bigger, wider roads, you bring more cars onto them. When you make narrower, slower roads, you push cars off of them, and that is a strategy that we might think about adopting also, purposefully, as part of our communication.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, good information, good conversations, thank you. Thank you, Chris, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, so that will now take us to the official call to order of tonight's council meeting for Monday, August 5th, 2024. Official meeting to start at 7:09. Would like to make recognition that all members of the council are present this evening, including City Administrator Bohanko, and would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the cloud, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, and equal to God for creating and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Okay, item number four this evening is committee correspondence to council. Are there any correspondents? Counselor Hewitt?
I just want to remind everybody, the library's having their book sale, August 17th to the 31st, and they're going to have a special preview night, August 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There's tickets available online.
Thank you, anyone else? Counselor Gunn?
Not so much correspondence, so much as more of a thank you to my liaison group, Age Friendly Saco, who were down yesterday at the Harbor Fest assisting folks for their transportation issues. I had an opportunity to ride with Director Saunders, who was getting people out of there as the rain picked up about 2:00 p.m., had some nice conversations with some folks, and I know the, the folks that volunteered down there, whether it was in the van or on the, on the bicycle, put in a very long day yesterday, and invaluable service to the folks, getting them in and out of that community, or just getting them across one side of Campells to the other. So I want to thank everyone at Age Friendly that was involved with that, and once again, Gold Star service, thank you.
Thank you, and yes, yesterday was many departments within the city, as well as many of our boards and commissions, that all spent their time volunteering. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item number five, public comment. If you wish to address council, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hi, good evening, Inga Brand, 161 Simpson Road. Thank you very much for the Zero Vision presentation tonight, extremely important. I spend a lot of time in Burlington, Vermont, where my son is a student, and I am always amazed and impressed by the traffic calming and bicycle-friendly tools that I see there. Bumpouts in many residential neighborhoods, you can tell, have been there for a long time, they're covered with lots of vegetation, but you know what's behind it, and you drive very slowly, and bicycles are everywhere, and I know that we can do the same over time. I'm talking tonight about your new business related to contract zone amendment revision. Thank you to staff for all the work thus far, lots of progress. I'm going to speak quickly, got my eye on the clock. There is an item that, for me, is still remiss, very large item, and I will also submit this to you in writing, so you have a formal record of it. I'm going to remind you that on May 2nd, 2024, the Maine Supreme Court in Michael Dolam versus the city of Saco reestablished that zoning and contract zoning is a legislative In your contract zone amendments that are on the table and what you're looking at for our ordinance, I see a glaring omission. When a contract zone is approved by you, the council, it obviously then requires a site plan approval by the planning board. That contract zone is inherently linked to its site plan approval, and the site plan reverse order is linked to the contract zone. When you, as a council, approve a contract zone, you've made a legislative act, you are responsible for having changed the zoning ordinance. When a contract zone holder comes back to the planning board for a site plan amendment, that amendment can get approved, obviously, by the planning board, but the legislative side of that contract zone, because the site plan is tied to the contract zone, those site plan amendments must come back to you, the council. All zoning is a legislative act. If you amend a site plan that is tied to a contract zone, that must come back to you, the council. That's my first point. Couple other more minor ones. I believe that the database for contract zones, as Ms. Pellegrino has been working on, I think that's remarkable and really looking forward to that, I believe for public accountability and transparency, compliance reports for the contract zones should also be filed in that database with the contract zones. The pathway for submission of compliance reports, I think that should be standardized. As it is now, some contract zone compliance reports get filed to the codes office, some get filed with other entities such as Saco Schools. All of these reports should be submitted simultaneously to the planning department and the codes department simultaneously. Lastly, I also believe that you, as a council, should receive drafts of the compliance reports. So what is this report going to look like?
Thank you, Inga, you are a minute over.
Thank you. Accountability, Emily has talked about measurable, enforceable compliance reports. I'd like the council to also review the compliance report formats. You are accountable for contract zones, and thereby I think those compliance reports should also be reviewed by you. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to address council?
Bob Hamblin, 347 Ferry Road. I've lived here for about 22 years now. I appreciate the presentation on Vision Zero that was offered by Mr. Chop, and thank you to the planning director for inviting that to happen and for the communication that she and her department regularly conduct with the Bike and Ped Advisory Committee. I'm not speaking for the committee right now, but as at least some of you know, I am on the committee. So I'd like to, having heard what we did, and perhaps in the near future, we can also hear a presentation from GP Cog or PAX on Complete Streets, which is another traffic calming program that is nationwide and, in fact, international. And as with Vision Zero, it's all about making our streets safer. So I moved here in 2001, and when I look around at the streets and roads in Saco now, and I look for traffic calming measures, you know, narrowing of streets or, or more visible, more effective crosswalks, speed bumps or speed tables, any, any of a myriad of engineering solutions that are utilized by many communities in Maine, and it took decades for it to get across the country to, to get to Maine, so they've been in this country for years and years now. And I pedal or, or walk around parts of Saco or bike, or drive around Saco, and I'm just not seeing many of them. I don't think we, as a city, have adopted a mentality of we can make these streets, sidewalks, crosswalks safer for everybody. So I welcome the presentation tonight. I was sorry that a copy of the Vision Zero report was not made available to you counselors. I have a copy here, I printed it off from the GP Cog website within the past week. It's available as a PDF, it, it absolutely aids and abets the seven-minute presentation that you heard tonight. So I'd encourage perhaps the city administrator and/or the planning director to make a copy of the Vision Zero report, which our very own Pat Fox co-chaired upon the completion of this thing in May of a year ago, 2023. So please get a copy, take a closer look, many good recommendations in there, but unless we, as a city, I'm noticing the countdown here for the first time, I'll wrap it up. Unless we, as a city, get serious about making some of these changes, unless we, as a city, require some of the directly affected department heads to incorporate some of these principles into their annual goals, it's all going to go nowhere. Thank you, council, thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Chelsea Hill, 108 Bradley Street. I'm going to read an excerpt from a book that I would recommend everyone read, it's called Killed by a Traffic Engineer, it was recently published, it's excellent, every single page has made me question reality. Police pulled over a 19-year-old guy from Maine for going 126 miles per hour in a 65. His reason, "I was a little late for work." Not long after, New Hampshire police caught a 45-year-old man going 150 miles an hour in a 65, he had a Corvette but didn't have a valid driver's license. In season 13 of the episode of, Episode of the Simpsons, 10-year-old Bart gets arrested for joyriding in a police car. In the courtroom scene at the end of the episode, Lisa says, "Motion to declare a writ of 'Boys Will Be Boys.'" The judge replies, "Motion granted." The 'Boys Will Be Boys' defense is, "We hope pushing things too far today, but we still don't take speeding seriously. Driving at more than double the speed limit may be ridiculous, but we all speed. When we do, we're generally not worried about the safety implications. We may be worried about getting a speeding ticket, but with most tickets, it's not like we'd consider ourselves a criminal or a menace to the safety of others. In fact, I bet you have a friend who swears that driving slow is more dangerous than driving fast, that person might even be you, but speed matters. That seems obvious, but we've somehow lost sight of the fundamental of physics. When things move faster, they cover more distance in the amount of time that it takes for someone to react, or as a 1990 Transportation Quarterly paper tells us, "A fast-moving vehicle leaves less time for drivers to make evasive maneuvers." When the driver does react and start braking, that braking also requires more distance. At 30 miles per hour, the stopping sight distance is around 200 feet. At 55 miles per hour, it's closer to 500, 500 feet. At 80 miles per hour, it exceeds 900 feet. According to NACTO, sight distance should equal, should be equal to or greater than the recommended stopping sight distance. I will connect this to a real-life recent example in the city. For the Amari subdivision review on Jenkins Road, the city's contracted traffic engineer wrote in her peer-review letter on 8/123, quote, "Sight distances from each access road are shown on the sketch plans. The plans show that the speed limit is posted at 35 miles an hour, but Sewell notes that the posted speed limit is 40 miles an hour. Saco's recommended minimum sight distance for 40 miles per hour is 445 feet. The plans show sight distance as exceeding 500 feet in both directions from both drives, drives. We are designing this road to allow people to drive fast." This book covers the design element of safe streets. I really, really encourage everyone in the city to read this book. In another project on Bradley and Lincoln Street, the city signed off on the developer's traffic impact study, which included absolutely no data nor assessment for cyclists or pedestrians or transit users, even though this development represented the addition of more than 2,200 vehicle trips per day in the immediate area of a densely populated, service-rich area full of walkers and bikers, already studded with failing intersections posted as 25 miles an hour, but with cars free-flowing at 45 miles an hour. The same traffic engineer's guidance to the planning board, "The developer can't be held responsible for improving failing intersections, and it can't fail more than it already is, so the trip additions aren't significant." I filed for reconsideration in denial of the traffic movement permit to Maine DOT, insisting that the permit should have never been given. I was denied and appealed to the commissioner of Maine DOT and won. The project's traffic movement permit was rescinded and remains rescinded because the developer didn't do the study correctly, but as a city, we never should have approved this project because the study was not completed to standard. These are examples of how we are not following Vision Zero. This is not to shame or call anyone out, this is to illustrate how in real time, we are making non-Vision Zero-guided decisions on how our city grows for generations to come. I hope that we can springboard into a mentality that reverses this type of decision-making and prioritizes people's safety by leveraging and operationalizing the resources found within Vision Zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Anyone else wishing to address council? Okay, not seeing anyone being recognized, we move on to item six, and that is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt. Any discussion on the minutes? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, although I was absent on July 2nd, I have reviewed the video and feel able to vote on the minutes if council has no objection.
Great, thank you, does anyone have any objection? Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes passes 7-0. Okay, that now takes us to item seven, and that is the consent items for the evening. And the first item, A, is the council schedule change for August, and B is the annual report filing extension. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston, any discussion or any item to be removed? Okay, not seeing any, roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion on the consent items passes 7-0. Okay, that now takes us to item eight, and that is action items this evening. And the first one is item A, which is a first reading, Charter Amendment, Section 2.01 and Section 4.01, composition of municipal offices and compensation, and that is Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. The city council endeavors to make a few amendments to the charter as described in MRSA Title 30A, Chapter 111, Section 2104. The process for making amendments to the charter requires a public hearing before a vote by council. Additionally, if approved by council, the item would be voted in referendum by the public in November. Be it ordered that the city council approve the first reading of the charter amendment included in the document titled Saco City Charter Amendment Number One, Section 2.01 and Section 4.01, Composition of Municipal Offices and Compensation, and further moved to schedule a public hearing and final reading for August 26, 2024, before a vote to add to the November referendum. This amendment, if approved by the voters, would have an effective date of January 1st, 2025.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston, any discussion? Counselor Johnston, then Counselor Hatch?
Thank you. I spoke at length about this on the 22nd, I believe it was, so I guess I just refer the public to my comments then, but I would state that, again, I think it's time for this, just as evidenced by the sheer fact that it's, it's difficult, even in this current cycle, to find people that, you know, will run for these offices. I would just, as I stated last time, offer an amendment to the Article 4 Board of Education section, currently reads an annual salary of $2,500. I would amend it to strike the $2,500 and replace it with the $5,000, that's equal to what council would be receiving.
Okay, there is an amendment by Counselor Johnson to replace Section 4.01 for the school board to strike the $2,500 compensation and change to $5,000, equal to council.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman, any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Johnston?
Ah, yeah, I believe at least two other counselors that weren't present for that, so I would just say that my rationale here is, again, speaking from experience with my mother having served on the school board for at least, I think she's at 18 years now. Big-time commitment, equally so to council, you know, you probably think, "Oh, it's just a school board," but they have a ton of subcommittees that, you know, they put their time into, and then you take into consideration that oftentimes those serving on the school board might have school-aged children, so it's, again, you're removing them from their household to, you know, volunteer some time towards the school department. So I think, you know, like I said, as evidenced, we just recently had a school board member resign. To my knowledge, that has to be up there with at least five in the 10-plus years that I've been on council, so it seems more often than not that people don't even complete the terms. And I'm not saying that money solves all, but I would imagine that, you know, if you're putting that time... if you're putting that time commitment in, you're only receiving $1,200 pre-tax. It probably does play at least a part into why we have a hard time filling school board. I would also say that I can count for at least three, maybe four, school board members that were, they won by write-in candidates. Nobody actually took out nomination papers during those elections. So again, I would certainly say that, you know, just like counsel, the position's underpaid considering what we're asking people to put in. So it's my rationale for it.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes 7-0. Back to the main motion. Any other discussion or comments? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I just want to clarify my position on this. In the minutes that we approved earlier this evening, when we initially discussed this, I was a proponent of making this effective at reelection dates. And I have subsequently come to realize through discussion that there's some disparity in doing that. And given the fact that the voters are going to actually decide on this matter, not necessarily the counsel here, I am comfortable with the change that indicates the effective date of the revised compensation level for each of the positions to be January 1, 2025. So I just wanted to clarify that for the public.
Great. Anyone else? City Administrator, quick question. Where they have approved an equal pay to counsel, we can strike 4.01 because currently the charter states equal pay as counsel?
Correct.
Would you actually, Counselor Johnston, like to amendment to take out 4.01?
No, I, well...
Specifically stated?
I, again, I reread that earlier, and I was thinking that, as Counselor Hatch presented it, he had stricken that language. He put that language in in 2014, I believe, just to, again, to align it with counsel. But given that we put a specific amount for counsel, I just thought, for clarity purposes, we just, as I did with my amendment, just put the actual dollar amount.
Okay. So leave it as it is with the amendment. Okay. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, that now takes us to item B, and that is the Community Development Block Grant, Economic Development Program. And that is Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. The Economic Development Department submitted a letter of intent for a CDBG Economic Development Program grant on behalf of Tanbark Molded Fiber Products. Tanbark Molded Fiber Products are located at 34 Spring Hill Road, are planning to purchase new equipment for the purpose of creating an additional 20 full-time jobs. The city was successful with the letter of intent and has been invited to submit a complete grant application in the amount of $100,000 as part of the next phase of the project. As part of the grant application, the city's required to hold a public hearing. The Economic Development Department will act as the grant administrator and will oversee the project to make sure all CDBG criteria are being followed and reported. There is no grant match required from the city. Be it ordered that the city council moves to schedule a public hearing on August 26, 2024 to support the submission of a CDBG Economic Development Grant application in the amount of $100,000, I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion or questions? We do have Economic Development Director Tracy Justjardens with us. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, I guess I just had a couple of questions. It looks like a great opportunity, and I'm excited to help bring jobs into town. I am wondering, I looked at the CDBG website a little bit, and the Economic Development Program website, and I'm wondering how we help or how the company is held accountable for creating the jobs that they say they're going to create. And I guess the second question that I have is, they have to show that they sought funding, it looks like, from other sources as part of their application. And I'm wondering if you could tell us a little bit more about the history of this project and how it got here, and what's going to go in as part of the application?
Yes, Tanbark, and they're going to be here for the public hearing as well. So they'll do a presentation so I can be able to answer more questions for you. This is an up-and-rising company. And the industrial park, they have received multiple awards and funding sources because of the type of product that they do. They use them, it's from basically the pulp, and it's the fiber, the molded fiber. And these are, and one of their clients happens to be Luke's Lobsters. So the containers that they're in now are this biodegradable product. And that's why they're receiving so much recognition based upon that. But they're just growing and growing really fast and creating jobs. To answer your question and monitoring of it, that's one thing that is part of my responsibility as the grant administrator. For the CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant Program, that's why it goes through the municipality. And you have to be the certified administrator to be able to monitor this program, which I am. Tori had also just gone through the training, so she also can help with that. One of the things that they'll have to do, they have to go out and they have to meet that criteria in looking for the low-to-moderate-income folks. So they'll work mostly with, like, the Career Center job fairs, where they'll target that low-to-moderate income to meet that criteria. And with that, they have to approve all the documentation and basically kind of go through that process as far as to do that. But the investment that they're making, and again, through the application, and you'll see that application as well, it basically will have the budget out there and what they're going to be putting in, which is a lot more than $100,000 for the equipment that they need. But part of that is, they need this equipment in order to add the jobs. So their grant is actually going for more of the job creation. Can I answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. And if I caught that too, the application will come in front of us before the final reading?
So how it works is that on the public hearing, I will have the application for you that you'll be able to see.
Perfect.
And then they'll also going to do a presentation to you and answer any questions. And then at the public hearing, I have to do an attendance on whomever's here because that also has to go into the state as part of the application, as well as the minutes to the meeting if there's any questions. That also goes to the state for review. But basically, on that evening, you'll be sending the full application to the state for consideration and supporting it. But the, one of the criterias with this community development grant is usually it's a match fund. It's like a 25% match fund. But because this is directly with the company, we're just, we're acting as the agent. So we're not having to put up any funds for this.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, that completes the action items this evening. Takes us down to item nine, and that is new business. Item A is the Contract Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Section 230 through 1705. And that is Planning Director Prescott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Councilors. I know we've spent some meeting time and workshop time on this. I'm sure there's comments and suggestions, so I can certainly hear those now. Or if it's more efficient, maybe sending those in through city administration might be helpful. And we can digest them before first reading. I just want to make sure to give everyone an opportunity to see this before we brought it forward as a first reading item.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. When it comes back to the first reading, will we have the list of contract zones that you all have been working on?
I believe so. Well, yes, we will have that for first reading. The reason why I said I believe so is because I'm thinking it might be best to repackage these as part of the full ordinance amendments process that we're going to be going through, because we have a workshop coming up on ordinance amendment revisions in September, unless there was some reason we needed to do these right now, which we're happy to do. But we will probably be making Chapter 230 amendments, I assume, as well as out of that workshop. But yes, we intend to have the list by the end of August.
Okay, thank you. I just, again, want to lend my own historic, last meeting you had stated, you didn't necessarily know if you had them all. So I'm just curious if I could look it over, because I think last time I looked at the list, there were maybe a handful that weren't on the list that I have knowledge of. Thank you.
We may have captured them, but I also encourage you to send them in to city administration if you have that list handy, because we can just cross-reference it against our list that we're working on.
Open your microphone.
Could you just send me the list to make it easier for me to go through it?
Yeah, we can certainly distribute it. We'll distribute it to everyone when it's ready.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then once received, any changes or send it to the city administrator? Hey, anyone else? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. First of all, I am the one that precipitated this conversation years ago. I went through this very, very carefully because it's very important to me. And I wanted to make sure I could trace all of, at least the conceptual issues that were of concern to me originally. And I just, and then, you know, in the last few weeks, I've been listening to you trying to separate procedure from ordinance and encouraging you to do that. So my overall comment to you is, this is a job well done. And I could not really find anything that you missed conceptually. It's somewhere in the ordinance or the procedures that you've established. So I just wanted to acknowledge that to you and thank you for that. However, I would like to add to the document some consideration for what was brought up in public hearing. And I actually had this note as I was reading through it today. I had a note to the same effect, only because I have seen one particular contract zone that I believe has gone through at least a dozen site plan changes. And I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for us to let that happen without that contract coming back before the counsel, because I'm trying to be respectful of the legalities of a contract between two parties. And so if a, and assuming that the site plan is part of the contract by reference, then it would seem to me very appropriate to, if there is in fact a site plan change, that that change come back before the counsel as well, which theoretically, in my view anyways, opens up the opportunity for us to look at the contract. Because there's supposed to be mutual benefits occurring between the developer and the city. And we're supposed to be, you know, good stewards of the interests of our citizens. And if the original contract and the site plan that went with it had certain expectations, and the site plan changes, those expectations change. I think we need to be able to deal with that here at the counsel level, to whatever extent the counsel as a body feels it should. So I guess I'm asking you to perhaps integrate some language in here that clearly indicates that if that site plan that's referenced in the contract does in fact come before the planning board for change, which is perfectly acceptable, that we have an opportunity to look at that at the counsel level. And I guess I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think our ordinance allows minor subdivision site plan changes to occur at the planning department level. That's discretionary on your part. And then there are the major ones that you, I think, bring before the planning board. I would like to encompass all site plan changes as part of that process. Other than that, I'm really good with this. And I'm also, I like your thought about integrating this into the other zoning changes. Let's do it all in one fell swoop, so I'm good with that as well. Okay, thank you.
So just for clarification, Counselor Hatch, planning board, does a site change, they get the approval? Having it noted, not that it necessarily has to be an approval of the, or a change to the contract zone, but it would come back to counsel for review? And if we feel that it doesn't match or follow the new site plan?
Well, I would, I would...
Planning would...
Yeah, I would suggest, and this is a legal issue, so I'm open to having this clarified by counsel, that if you have a legal contract that's linked to a site plan by reference, and that site plan changes, a condition of the contract changes. And so both parties, being the city council and the developer, should agree to those changes. And I don't think that's what's happened to this point. I'm not passing judgment on it, and I'm certainly, you know, whatever's happened, happened. We can grandfather. But moving forward, when this ordinance is put into place, I would, I just think, otherwise, and I'm not suggesting that it's happening, but it could happen, where the site plans, we enter into a contract, we negotiate terms, we see a benefit to the community, which is an integral part of granting a contract zone, and then the site plan changes, and that perceived benefit we were going to receive is now either diluted or non-existent. I just think the legalities of this, they have to link the two. So that's sort of my position on this.
So I think it's more of a process of how counsel would be notified, whether we bring it as a new business, whether you're able to just present it to counsel for review, and then it can come back if there are changes. So I think it's more of a process plan.
Madam Mayor, if I may ask, or just make a statement, I will look into that question most definitely. We have to be very careful when we talk about the legalities. Some contracts have different language as far as what the applicant agreed to with the city council. Also, a lot of our contracts put that determination onto the planning board or the city planner itself, not on, back onto the counsel unless there are changes to the language of the contract zone. So I just want to be careful that we respect both the counsel and the planning board's authority in this. And I'll work on getting a question, answer to that question with City Administrator Bahin Gell. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Again, along Counselor Hatch's comments, I wholeheartedly support what he's proposed, certainly into the future, you know, with future contract zones. I will say, from my own experience here, and I don't know if this is a contract zone you're referring to, but I've stated previously, several months ago, about the issue that I have anyway, with Park North, because I've brought this up through the years, and it had been confirmed by Solicitor Murphy that every amendment they do to that contract zone needs to come back to counsel, which is why in 2019, they came back before counsel and had to get all 17 amendments retroactively approved, which, again, wasn't to my liking, but I raised the issue, got it to that point. Now, the problem is that since then, I don't know how many amendments they've had, but they have not been back to counsel for those subsequent approvals. And I certainly used it in 2017 as the tool to ensure compliance with things that hadn't been, for a variety of reasons, hadn't been followed under the original contract zone. So I do think there's certainly merit to having that stipulation, particularly with some of these larger convoluted contract zones that we have. And hopefully, we won't have those going forward. But, yeah, so I think, like I said, I don't know if you're talking about Park North in particularly, but it is something I intended to bring up and counsel comment tonight. The fact that those amendments have not... fact that those amendments have not come back to council. So I would agree with Counselor Hatch's opinions here as to including that going forward, whatever ordinance we have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Overall, just good job. I think this is moving forward. But one of the things I've recognized over seven years is our risk on the, on not just the compliance of tracking it, but the penalty clause. We've never had penalty clause built in. I've mentioned this many years. I've mentioned it to many councils, but that's one of the risks. I don't want an ordinance that says it has to be in there. So I started reading what you've written and possibly if you can look into how we can build penalty clauses built into the contract, but not specifics, allow the project to determine the specifics. So I was thinking of like billing off of your Section 4B, like Item 6, where you write the condition proposed is sufficient to meet the intent of this section, almost something, the penalty clause, the penalties are sufficient to meet, something that still requires us to look at it, but let the council of the future determine if a penalty clause is needed because a lot of times when we have these, but we don't build in the penalties, we lose our enforcement and we lose our leverage. And I feel like that's one of the greatest risks that we have with a lot of our contract zones is that we lose our leverage as soon as the project's been built. So something that, like that, it could go into Section 4 here, or it could even go into general provisions, but not necessarily to force the council to put it, but as you had written, it must consider or something to that nature. I would definitely love to see that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, there, that's a very good point. I'll certainly look into that. There are certainly enforcement provision clauses in the current contract zone agreements in certain situations. I don't know why, I can't speak to why they historically hadn't been used, but we certainly have penalty enforcement opportunities written into our entire zoning code. We can certainly cross-reference those, but again, I just want to make sure that we're setting a good path forward and then also looking at our history as much as we can and cleaning up as much as we can to kind of leap us into that next step of where we need to be.
I was more about that it's actually built into the discussions of the contract, not necessarily everything else, but when we're behind the scenes actually creating, drafting this contract that we have looked at penalty clauses and not defining it what it is legislatively, but to say that, yes, we have looked at it and determine what that should be, shall be.
Thank you for that clarity. And then as far as Park North, I certainly will follow up on the questions with the city administrator.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one clarifying question because you were talking about obviously the legalities of respecting the different authorities between planning board and council. And of course, going forward, if this was implemented, I would imagine that anyone seeking a contract zone would go in understanding that division of labor as we decide what it would actually be. So it's not as if they can come in and say, well, I, you know, I only want to deal with the planning board. I don't think the council should have any word in it. They wouldn't have any agency to say that. That being said, for pre-existing contract zones as they exist right now, would this essentially require some sort of grandfather clause to stand up to scrutiny in court or are they, would they all be subjected to this new, not really new, but as, as the speaker mentioned earlier during public comment, confirmed by the state court that we would have the ability to review any site plan changes though? I mean, or would they be grandfathered, protected from essentially like a full council review? I guess I'm not clear on that.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I'll look into the question that's been asked this evening and then we would, we would honor the terms of the previous agreements, whatever those were. And they're all different across all different agreements, which is why I thank the council for your time in doing this exercise. At the next time we see you, we'll have like a standard template for how we want to see contract zone agreements because that's also been part of the problem is there's no standardization across all agreements. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, great. Counselor Hatch, this is assigned to you when it comes back to us.
I'd be happy to take it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're all set? Thank you. Okay, that now takes us to Item B, and that is the parking plan and fee schedule changes for 142 Main Street parking lot. And that is Director Fox and Director Distardens.
This is an item we've discussed previously in workshop, just bringing it back with a couple extra attachments, including the fee schedule that would need to be amended for the newer city parking lot at 142 Main Street, as well as the ordinance, just adding this parking lot to the list of city parking lots and a few other ordinance changes that we just decided we'd clean up when we go through the three-meeting process on this ordinance related to acknowledging that we have different payment structures now and they're not pay and display. We now have pay by plate. We may switch to other electronic systems over the years, so trying to make it a little bit more general, just to recognize all the different technology you can use to pay for parking passes. So we have still sort of stayed with the same diagram and we discussed previously and there was some great discussion, but I didn't see any sort of consensus or direction to go in a different direction. So we just, we have approximately 20 spaces that are leased to an abutting property. We were going to leave 20 spaces to be two-hour parking to supplement people attending downtown businesses for quick visits or some shopping and then allocate half the parking lot for sort of the, the economy lot, if you will, for the train station traffic. So it would be longer-term parking at a lower rate than the parking lot that is directly at the train station. So if someone did not want to pay the $5 a day to take the M-Track or use the buses or access downtown, this would be an option that we've got in this draft as $2.50. So half the rate of the lot that's closer to the train station. If you want to walk a little bit further, you could pay a little bit less. So I think that accommodates most of the comments we had the first time around, but happy to answer any questions. And then obviously you'll see this a few more times since it does involve ordinance and fee schedule changes.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thanks. Looks great to me. I think $2.50 is a great price, like the allocation of spaces. Just really a clarifying question, with the $2.50 per day, can people still pay for multiple days at once if they're going on a trip on the train?
Yep. Yep, you can pay up to, I think we'd keep it at the 10 or 14, I don't want to misquote. I will actually, I'll actually make sure that's added to the, as this goes through the process, but it's either the 10 or 14-day limit and they can pay up to that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Bear with me because I'm going to take you down a rabbit hole that, this is a long outstanding question I have had that's not related specifically to this law, but since we have the ordinance open, we list Water Street Lot as a public parking lot on the city of Saco. So I'm glad we recognize this as a city lot. I think most people in the city of Saco would not realize it's a public lot unless you're familiar with the area or grew up in the areas as I have. So my understanding, however, is that there used to be, may still be, I don't, that's really my question. The city acquired that lot in the late 70s during one of their many shelved parking studies. The idea as it stands still today in the current parking study is that we're going to acquire some of these lots and make the connections. That's the only lot that got acquired. So, and so people are familiar with the lot I'm talking about, it's the lot directly next to 23 Water Street. It's an office building. Used to be Dr. Britton's office is there. Not 100% sure of all the configurations of what's in there today. There was a lease put in place in 1980 that ran until 2010 that the owner at the time built the lot and they were to have, I think it was 20 or 25 parking spaces. I don't know what happened during the 80s. I was too young to remember or care really. So the lot got built out, but there's not 25 parking spaces. So for the vast majority of that time, there weren't 25, but they had exclusivity to 25 spots, so those businesses used all of those parking spaces. So as I said, in 2010, this lease expired. Fast forward to 2015, 2016, when Mr. Sutherland was here, I asked this question about this lot, trying to figure out, is it still under lease? Is it public parking? And if it's public parking, is it free public parking for the neighborhood? So that's really my question. I don't need an answer obviously tonight, but if we're going to be looking at these lots, I think clarifying if that is a public parking lot, kind of imperative to our overall parking situation to the downtown and certainly if, I mean, the city owns it, there's no question about that, but we probably should take the responsibility of ownership at this point and either get a leasing agreement in place with the business that's utilizing it because it is signed, not for public parking, or sell the lot or something. I just, it needs to have clarity. It's come up through, I mean, the ownership has changed several, several times since 2015 when I first kind of was wondering about this. So I think we need to have clarity of what that lot is because it may play into how we decide these other lots or what we're charging. So as far as the lot we're discussing, the new lot, yeah, I, there's a lot to digest here. Perhaps I spent too much time looking at it as I tend to do with things and maybe confuse myself, but, and I understand, you know, you've put forth this fee structure to have as you stated, an economy price, which I kind of snickered at at the time because I don't, there's just too much to enforce. I don't understand having different hierarchy of prices. If we're going to charge $5 at the train station for train station parking, why would you do $2.50 at this lot? Am I missing something there? It's daytime parking, correct? Can I park? I think you just answered this question, but it's not just for a 24-hour period. I could park up to 14 days at $2.50?
Yeah, it might be $2.50 per day for, I think it's, it might be 10 days now.
Okay, so 10 days, whereas at the train station, it's $5, same idea as a limited amount of time I can park there. Not a criticism of city staff, probably from us because we didn't give a clear direction. I just, why are we having this different parking structure? Either there's a price for it and it's the same as it is at the train station, what's the difference? Because when I look at this rate, at $2.50 a day, that's roughly, again, math was never my strong suit, but 75 bucks a month will round up. As a person in the downtown that pays for parking and they do exist, you know, a tenant that has to pay for parking, that's $75 a month, it's actually cheaper in some instances to go and park at the city lot, dump my access car there than it is going through my landlord. And so my concern here is that we all know, we all hear, we have one parking attendant, we have limited police officers, where while we're trying to, you know, help people out, we're actually potentially creating a situation, maybe I always look at things from what's the worst thing that can happen. That's literally how everything in life I look at. I go, well, what's the worst thing going to happen? Not just, let's say everything's going to be hunky-dory. I just see this becoming, you know, a blob for the city where at some point in the future we're going to be having to have a parking attendant to enforce not just the different fee structures, but, you know, the overall lot itself. I mean, I, I'm already aware that people have been parking there recently, had their car vandalized, broken into, unhoused people in their vehicle. So I, I don't know. Again, that's why it's before us. I'm certainly not criticizing, I just, trying to figure out how to do this in a way that, you know, $2.50 just seems too cheap for starters for me.
If I might. So what we tried to do after we had our discussion in our workshop is to create what they call in, you know, parking parlance, dynamic pricing. So the, you know, if you want to be closer, as was said earlier, then you pay a higher rate. If you want to pay the lower rate, you go to a place that's a little less convenient. The other thing about the lot and the purpose of the lot is to get people to park for free to help people and generate people to come downtown so that they have parking available to them. The, the $25 for 10 days, I think, comes about as what we heard from people that park every day that they go down to Boston. If they want to save money, they can go there. So that's, the whole intent of dynamic pricing is to push people to various places that are more convenient for people to pay the higher price, less convenient for the lower price. Now, I think it's important to understand that this is the first time we've owned this lot, so what we're going to have to do is we'll keep an eye on it and we'll determine if, hey, I think as Counselor Johnson said, that it could be that we need to adjust the pricing. So that's what we'll do. But I think that Director Fox has looked at this and as a result of our workshop, I think this is a compromise that we wanted to make. It addresses all the issues where you have downtown parking free for two hours, you have people that want to economize and go on the train for 10 days. It's $25 as opposed to $50 for, you know, spending time at the train station. So it's going, we're going to also, as a result of this, is continue to improve the slot. You know, I think it's important that we maintain the lot at a higher standard and that also that we set it up so that people are feeling that their, their property will be okay. So I think some of your comments are valid and I would like to then, over the next few months, take a look at what happens if we go with this rate.
I think, if I can just add one nice thing about the parking system that this flows into is it's not complicated for staff because they're all paying, they're all paying through an automated system. So we used to worry about charging 50 cents instead of even dollars because you'd have to make change for it. I mean, this is all just paid online. So what we'll have after three months, six months, or a year, whenever you want to revisit this, certainly by the time you read, you adjust your fee schedule as part of next year's budget, we'll have how many people pulled in and used that lot versus the other. We'll have exact counts of how many cars were in the lot, how much was paid, what the revenue was, and how it was used. So you'll have that data when you make your next, when you enter your next budget process so that, that'll help you maybe make adjustments if you want to later.
I haven't succeeded the floor yet, but.
Counselor Archer?
Yes, I just want to follow up on Counselor Johnson's comment about enforcement. There's materially no difference. I'm looking at Flowbird right now. It would just have a different code, like right now the transition to SDS. It would just be a code, a three-letter code for $2.50 and it's really just staff looking to see license plate connect, there it is, we're good.
Yeah, the license plate has to be in the right parking lot. So it'd be, yeah.
So materially no, it's just more cars, but the process is 100% the same.
Yeah. And another thing, I mean, as the sort of secondary lot, the cheaper lot, we don't even have to put a parking meter over there if we're concerned about kind of the parking meter in the back of that parking lot. That can be pay by app only just through signage. So there's a lot of different things we can do with that.
Is this going to be used for storm parking? Or parking bans?
So right now it would still stay a pay lot, but it would be available for, since it is a long-term lot, we're not going to move people out of there during a storm because they could be in Florida and not having to deal with a storm.
Right, but residents on Main Street or anything if we have.
People would go, they would choose to move a car there and they'd pay $2.50 to not be on the street during a snowstorm, so just like they do in other cities and the parking garages will fill up. If we ever wanted to do something different during snow bands, you would have flexibility to do that as well.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, no, I understand the intent and if we were strictly talking about $2.50 for a 24-hour period, which is what I originally, when I read this, that's what I was thinking, whereas the train station had always been long-term parking, that made sense somewhat in that you're charging a little less, but they have to come back and move their car. So you had that turnover. But what I'm hearing is that I can park there for up to 10 days at the $2.50 rate and there is not so much of a significant difference between 100 feet in like, you know, say some backend lot that, you know, you're paying a less rate for in my mind. Furthermore, when, you know, we say there's not much for enforcement, you know, again, having some experience with parking lots in my time, you're not the one doing the enforcement. And when I, when I look at this and I say we're going to have 20 two-hour free parking spots, day spots, then leased spots, that's three different, we'll call it regulations. So as a parking attendant, I come and, well, let's say Johnny parks in a two-hour parking spot, is that parking attendant going to come and check every two hours or are we going to have people that just abuse the system? Or are we going to have people that just abuse the system, take up the spots, not pay, and then those people that come in, vice versa, for the leased spaces? I have a leased space for the city of Saco. I don't, I mean, as just a person that's going to the parking lot, even if you sign it, they may say, well, I don't care, now I'm going to park in that leased person's space. So we have an enforcement issue that is undoubtedly going to crop up, because we've already had this with the train station previously. And, you know, God bless our parking attendant, she does a phenomenal job, but she has to be everywhere in Saco and deal with the people that then complain. So I understand the idea of having the free parking, and then I'm somewhat be supportive of that, but I still can see how this is going to end up being an absolute pain for the person doing the actual enforcement. And do we, is the fine like it would be? So if I parked in a two-hour parking on Main Street, I think it's $35 fine? That's the same fine structure for those parking spots at a, at a parking lot?
I've been fortunate not to get a ticket in those parking lots, but I would double-check. I believe it's just all one if you're violating parking, whether it's on Main Street or in a parking lot. I think it's the same fee.
Will the leased spots have a permit sticker, or something that identifies them?
So the, the only thing, the only thing to your, talking about the three levels of enforcement, with the lease, we also passed along the enforcement to, so they have 20 spots, but they're responsible. We are not keeping track of every tenant and every, we are not tracking that with the city's enforcement officer. So if the landlord ever comes back to us and wants to renegotiate the lease because they're finding that the municipal parking is interfering with their parking, we'll address that at a later time. But in the initial lease, we did not accept the enforcement of their leased spaces. They are, they are responsible for that section of the lot. If it fills up with other cars, they would have to...
And again, when, when we entered into that lease, we didn't have, we weren't creating the problem. Now, we potentially could fill that entire lot, and it's on them to enforce their own parking, the city's not going to participate. I can see where this can become a challenge, for sure. In fact, I can already hear my ears ringing from members that live there, that are saying this, people are parking in my leased spaces. I don't know. I mean, obviously, it's first time, we'll have to figure out how this, this works. But for me personally, and counsel can vote however, but I still look at the $2.50, it's $2.50, $5 a day, and I've sat up here for many years, and I've said this over and over, parking costs money. There is no such thing as free parking. My particular house, I have a driveway, the city taxed me on the five or so parking spots I have, paying therefore for parking, just like everybody else. You, free parking on Main Street, it's not free. Taxpayers pay for it. So I think $5 is extremely reasonable. It's cheaper than anywhere else I've been, certainly in New England. I, I think, you know, Counsel Archer, you, you had indicated to me previously that you paid more for your, your locker at the Museum of Science. So the, the idea is to maintain this. We spent $450,000 on the parking lot, fully supported it. But going forward, I don't think that this needs to become the welfare law for a handful of people that ultimately use it. It needs to be able to sustain its, the maintenance of it. Yeah, so that's just my feeling on it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel again?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pat, I just had a question, because we, we briefly alluded on, alluded to this, the use of the, the lot in, as a resource when we have a bad snowstorm. Now, obviously, yes, we can give people the option of, you know, parking in a lot they usually don't park in and having to pay for it. That being said, would you, or I suppose the city administrator, have the unilateral authority to waive such a fee for, say, like a 24-hour period, just to like, sort of take the edge off a storm? That's something we'd have to come from the policy from us? Or, because, because like I said, you can see where, as a good sort of Samaritan idea, that, hey, you know, you're not scrambling to, you know, to find, find a place to park, we got you covered for at least 24 hours. It would be a nice PR-wise, not to mention just good, good, good thing to do, so what...
I can...
And yes, yeah, I, I don't have to end that sentence, please.
No, the, the only sort of lesson learned over the last 20 years of driving around and seeing what people do in a snowstorm when we put a parking ban on, is if it is a free lot, and it's at that location, it's a bit of the no good deed goes unpunished, you will have act, you will have people move vehicles there ahead of time, and they will do it, because if you look at a lot of the larger apartment complexes, they put restrictions, and they make you move your cars at certain times, to avoid having to clean off their car or move it at that specific time, they'll just move it over there for two days. And then the parking lot isn't available for the people the next morning that are trying to commute to Boston or use it for other uses. So I, that's the, that's the dance you do with downtown parking, is if you charge no fee, then you're going to see cars get left there that maybe have another place to park, but it, that just all of a sudden becomes a more convenient option for a snowstorm. So I, I think maintaining the fee through the snowstorm and letting people measure, okay, I need a place for my car, $2.50 is a reasonable, or whatever the fee is, $2.50 or $5 is pretty reasonable to have a place, safe place for your vehicle for a storm. So I, my, my suggestion would be to just leave it alone, but I think at any time, a fee could be suspended through, through administration if that were the directive of the council.
Okay, anyone else? Counsel Johnson, this is assigned to you.
So I'm in a, I, this will be packaged very similarly. I'm not hearing much on the ordinance changes, and then it'll basically, as it goes through the process, come down to mostly just the fee structure, and I'll leave the rest alone.
Great. Thank you, Pat.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counsel Archer.
One second, doing some quick math. Can you look at like, what the average occupancy that we're forecast? Because I'm looking at, if we were renting at 100%, which I know that's, that's optimal, but it's not going to happen, but that's still bringing in about 40 grand a year for, at the $2.50 rate. If we could kind of understand like, what the proposed, what the forecasted occupancy rate is, we could figure this out mathematically, if it's worth, budgeting-wise, if it's worth the labor, if it's worth whatever. If you could just write, again, forecast, I get it.
I, I can show you, I, I don't think this is going to have the immediate demand that, when we switched to paid parking at the baby lots down at the beach, I'm always a little proud of that. We got really, we said that would be $50,000 a year, and it was within like $1,000 in the first year of our projection. I don't think I can do that for this lot, because I don't think the, this is more a, a growth opportunity for the city in the future. I don't think there's going to be that kind of demand on a daily basis for this lot.
Okay.
So, right off the bat. So we can do some quick numbers on number, number of paid spaces for 25, 50, 75, and 100%.
Because it looks like we'll be able to bring about 110 in revenue. Now we have expenses, I know we have to pay the vendor, but it could be, again, cover the cost of, of the labor that we do to enforce.
Yeah, I'll provide a little cost table for you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so that now takes us to item C, and that's a Chapter 166, Public Spaces and Parks.
So, Your Honor, I'll ask that the police chief and the Parks and Recreation Director come forward to discuss this. Go ahead, Chief.
Good evening. So, a quick overview, I'm sure a lot of you have seen what's gone across, gone on across the country. It's been a topic of conversation, but recently, earlier this year, the United States Supreme Court decided Johnson v. Grants Pass. It was a 6-3 decision, and that decision came out and said that cities have the right to regulate their public spaces surrounding homelessness. So in order for us to do that, we need to have an ordinance that, that covers us, so that we have that enforcement ability. So in working with Director Sommer and with the city attorney, we came up with something that I think covers us in the areas that we want to be covered. It covers the park hours, talks about camping in public spaces. The nice thing about this as well is there's quite a few communities that have already had this, but it's a no-drug zone. So in the event that we come across somebody who's dealing or trafficking in drugs within this defined space by Nevada law, excuse me, Maine law, sorry about that, by Maine law under 17A, Chapter 45, that allows us to bump it up one classification. So if we get a Class B, it becomes a Class A. The other thing that this covers is, again, just some of the nuisance crimes, public drinking, motorized vehicles, that type of thing. And then I think the fines that are in here have been, are very reasonable, but I think, like I said, it gives us the ability to manage our parks and our public spaces as the current unhoused crisis continues to grow.
Just adding to that, because as this, we started to look at this, we found that our ordinances really didn't have anything that could identify moving people from the parks in the evening hours. So this allows the police department to have a little bit more ability to, to make that decision as to how we're going to move people out.
Any questions or comments? Counsel Johnson, then Counsel Berman?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the work that's been done to date, you know, at my request on this. I think, you know, for clarity purposes, for counsel, as I had stated previously, and the administrator just, you know, indicated, I think that we had a lot of spoken policy when it was in regard to our parks. I mean, I, I knew them, it might have had a sign, but there wasn't any actual ordinance or, you know, law in place. So this, you know, I don't, I don't have, you know, too much to add tonight. I, I think, as I've looked at this, there's probably some amendments I'll have, but overall, I think it's certainly more than we have to date, and a jumping off point. So I just appreciate the work that's been done.
Counsel Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I largely agree with Counsel Johnson. I think this is a giant step forward and long-needed. I do have a question about the fines, though, particularly as it relates to the unhoused population.
Yes, sir.
And I understand there can become a cycle in which we find people who can't afford to pay the fines, and that results in then arrest summonses being issued, and kind of creates this, this cascading, I guess, interactions with the law and, and arrest for some of our unhoused, and do we anticipate that problem? And are there pathways around that, so we don't end up finding people who can't pay, and then creating a second class of crime for them, and making their situation worse as opposed to better?
So what I can tell you, sir, is that we, obviously, you know, we have a licensed clinical social worker that's assigned to the police department. There's not one person that I've gone out and talked to that's on city property, that has not had an interaction with Rebecca Lyons. They've all got her card, they've got everything from her. The resources that she has available are there. What I am seeing is that folks don't want to take advantage of those resources. So it kind of leaves us in a predicament, because, you know, I can, as an example, and I think Director Sommer can attest to it, we had some folks that were, that were camping in Diamond Riverside Park, right along the wood line, and the mess that they left was unbelievable. We were down there on a Friday afternoon, after hours, overtime, getting this cleaned up and getting it moved out, but it, it took several days of going down and offering resources, giving them a second chance, issuing a criminal trespass notice. And then I was down there with one of my lieutenants for about eight hours, while these folks got packed up and left the area. And during that time, there was probably 20 people in the park, most of them little kids, that heard the screaming and yelling and the profanities, and they left the park. So, like I said, I, I think this is something the city, in my opinion, we're doing everything we can to help folks out, but I think we do have to have some mechanism where there are some fines, or there's something to it, to try to keep these folks from leaving a mess where they're at. I mean, when I talk about a mess, I'm needles, human feces, all that stuff. And I think Director Sommer and his crew have put a lot of time, money, and resources into these parks. I'd hate to see them not be used. So I do, I, I agree with you, but we are doing everything within our power. We're not just going out there and saying, you got to go. I mean, we are making the effort, where Rebecca's going over and talking with these folks, we're offering them the resources. I think what we're seeing is, is that the folks we're starting to come in contact with more and more just do not want to take advantage of those resources.
Counsel Archer, then Counsel Hatch?
Yes, I get it, Madam Mayor. More about the process on the fines is, is this would be considered a civil offense, correct?
It is a civil.
So it would not go against them criminally, would not be used against them for any type of housing violations or anything like that? It would just be an internal database of what they owe us? And if we truly wanted it, we'd have to sue to get it, correct?
It does go into the court, but again, it's a...
The court, sorry.
It's a municipal civil fine, so it doesn't show up as a criminal record, it doesn't show up in any of that. It's just a fine.
So it would give your officer, yourself and your officers some, some, some power, but it would not lead to criminal? It would not lead to, we're not a debtors' society, so...
No, sir.
It would just be an internal record?
Yeah, the only time that it would lead to something criminal is if they absolutely refused to leave.
Did something, yeah.
It's criminal trespass.
Yeah, but not the fine.
Not the fine, not the, the fine under this ordinance is civil.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counsel Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I might be the odd man out, but I thought the fines were on the low side. When we talk about human accountability, responsibility, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that I don't have an alternative fine, but my first reaction was it, it wasn't enough. I'm delighted we have the opportunity to put something in place that we can wrap our arms around and, and get some stuff done. Because here, here's the problem, Diamond Park's in my ward, I got, I have constituents who, who own property, they pay their taxes, they want to go out on the back deck and enjoy their property, quiet enjoyment. We have citizens who want to go to the park because we gave it to them for quiet enjoyment. And when we have this infiltration, it, it, it takes away all of that right that our citizens should have. Now, I've been fortunate enough to see Rebecca in operation, okay? We're blessed to have her.
She's remarkable.
She is. And she does her job really well, and, and I, and I suspect that she knows she has your support and the support of the rest of the department. She does the best she can to offer assistance, but there's, there's always going to be, for whatever reasons, individuals who don't want to take advantage of those resources. And I'm not sure what else we can do. But what I do want to protect us from is the inability of our kids, my grandkids, my constituents, to enjoy the resources recreationally that we give them here in Saco. So I'm fully supportive of this. I'm not suggesting we got to go up on the fines, I'm just saying my initial reaction. And I suspect that once we get this in operation, we're going to find that we need to tweak it. So I'm good with that. I think this is a really good head start. So hopefully, hopefully this will, will give us some, some leverage to, to get some positive, positive things done. Now, in the meantime, I'm certainly a supporter of trying to come up with plans and, and policies that deal with the unhoused and transitional resources, which Rebecca is constantly reminding them of, so I'm, I'm a proponent of that. But I, I think we, we crossed the line here in terms of forgetting the rest of our, our constituents, our taxpayers, who really have a right to peacefully go to that park and enjoy all the wonderful amenities that it has, without fear of what's happening behind the scenes or wherever, having the police department have to come down... or wherever, having the police department have to come down to the park and arrest people. It's like, come on, this isn't, this isn't right. So I appreciate the effort here.
Anyone else? Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, this is more of a, I guess, legal question in terms of, because we have pub, public spaces and parks, we all know what that means. That covers you and gives your department a carte blanche to enforce the laws or ordinances as we pass them. Now, to other councilors' points of view, and I ran into this myself, actually, we're up where I live, over on Portland Road, we had a young gentleman who was part, camping in, I call it the woods, but it was really sort of adjacent to the east, the green, the trail, the Eastern Trail. And you get into that point where you're not sure, is it Saco Bay Trails owns the land? Is there conservation easement, et cetera, et cetera? Now, my thought, based on how this ordinance is written, as sort of a piggyback on what Bedford is doing, and again, from the Supreme Court and all that, is that it would have the practical effect of moving the people who don't want to get help into essentially the wooded areas. And if that is the case, obviously, if it's public, if it's private property and wooded, that's easily covered there. But when it gets to be public property or this sort of quasi-in-between where it's a public-private entity or something of that matter, and these folks are there, now, if they're in a situation, I like to think that if they're in the woods and they're keeping it to themselves and not causing any trouble, then that's not something the police is going to go out and look for. But if it's a person, to the earlier point, that is causing a commotion enough that's audible to the point that anyone within a reasonable distance could say, "Hey, over in those woods," God knows how far in, maybe a quarter mile, maybe an eighth of a mile, maybe something that little, "Something's not right over there." Even if it's not technically a park or whatever, would there be any limitations in terms of your ability to go in there and enforce that as is?
So if it's, thanks to Director Fox, we've got some programs that we can look at. Pretty much every square inch of the city, we know who the property owner is.
Yeah.
I'll give you a good example. Out behind Thornton Academy along the Eastern Trail, there were some encampments that were set up. They're on the Granite Bay Pipeline or Unitil Pipeline. So I reached out to them and asked them what their preference was. Are you okay with people being there, not being there? Because it's a gas pipeline, they're like, "Nope, we don't want anybody there." So we went out, had a conversation with folks, I got a letter from Unitil, let everybody know that they didn't want them on their property, gave them time to leave. It's not like you get to leave right now, they have a lot of stuff, but gave them over the weekend. Some folks left, some folks didn't, so we'll address it for the folks that haven't left. It's private property. If somebody doesn't want them there and they served them notice, which they gave us the notice to give to them, it's criminal trespassing. So if they're out in the woods, anywhere in the city, and it's private property, if the private property owner is okay with them being there, then there's nothing we're gonna do about that. Unless they're breaking some other ordinance, like, you know, too loud after hours, that type of thing, then that's a different conversation. But private property is private property. If they, if folks are okay with somebody being on their private property, we're not gonna do anything about it. This strictly deals with public spaces, the land that's owned by the city. So not just the park, but any city parcels that we own. On the other side of the railroad tracks from Diamond Riverside Park, last year, there were some encampments, and there's a separate ordinance that covers leaving trash and hazardous material. So we went out and enforced that, and I believe they took out-
About ninety bags of trash.
Ninety fifty-five gallon bags of trash. It's an all-day cleanup from these folks. And like I said, typically, we're going out with Sharps containers. A little over a year ago, on New Year's, myself and Lieutenant Fox went out to General Dynamics Property, they asked us to go check on something. We brought out two, there were two soiled coolers out there, we filled them with needles. There was probably five hundred needles that the lieutenant and I picked up ourselves, put in the cooler, closed it, brought it back to the PD, and pounded it, and then the city paid for destruction of that. So, you know, the issue is, like with the General Dynamics property, they've now posted it, but there's kids that go out and play with, play in those woods. There were edged weapons, needles, buckets of feces, I mean, it's just not a safe environment. So we've spoken with them, and they don't want folks on their property. So same thing, same example, somebody's out in the woods, we'll find out who the owner is, and if they don't want them there, then we'll address it.
Anyone else? Councilor Johnston?
Just add, I mean, to Chief's point, I don't think there's anybody up here that doesn't want to be humane in the process, but the reality is, and for many people, they don't see it, based on where they live or whatnot, but I mean, as Chief has said, I've seen it. I've seen, right in front of my house on US Route One, myself picking up Sharps. I don't have an answer for that problem. That's clearly been going on for some time, right? It's certainly larger than all of us up here. But to Chief's point, to my prior points, just because you have a drug addiction or because you're unhoused, does not mean that the rest of the citizens' rights all of a sudden go away. So I think that's important, you know, as we move forward, because I have heard from people, like, "Oh, well, what about?" And it's like, I get that, but I don't have that answer, but there are, you know, I've given examples myself, you know, experiences at, you know, I use Diamond Park, because obviously, that's, that's one of our hot topic areas, because it's relatively secluded. It was a significant investment, one I, again, wholeheartedly supported, but I've been there with my son near, you know, dusk or whatnot, it's starting to get dark, and it's, yeah, you know, things come out at night, it's not acceptable. We have city staff that works there, they shouldn't have, you know, deal with what they've dealt with. Another key component that, you know, I've expressed before, at least three of our parks are adjacent to schools, right? And I could give example after example that I, in the past, where I've had principals ask, "Well, what do I do with this?" And it's like, "Well, it's a city park," right? Even though it's right next to the school, it's a city park, so they kind of, under the prior ordinance, had a right to be there, even if you are questioning what they're doing, their behaviors. So, again, I think, you know, overall, it's not just about unhoused issue, it's kind of about taking kind of ownership back over some of our parks, and that's why, you know, as I said, going forward, I'll probably have some additional amendments that really addresses other areas, not so much the homelessness, but just, you know, acceptable behaviors in our parks, things that I've seen over the years that I didn't necessarily know, you know, I just throw, as an example, do we allow open fires? No, but there's nothing on the ordinance that says that, and I've seen people have open fires. Do we allow fire pits or grills, right? And again, I have plenty more examples. Dress code, do we allow nudity? Because I can give an example where an individual was doing what I would call near nude yoga in a school park, and the question was, how do we deal with this, you know, over at Fairfield? And it's kind of like, "Well, I don't have an answer for you." So I think that needs to be defined, that, you know, clothing is not optional, even if state law says, you know, otherwise. So just, you know, some of those things to think about as we move this forward. Thank you.
In regards to that city administrator, when is this potentially planning on being brought back?
We'd like to bring it back as soon as possible because, at present, we really don't have a lot to go on right now.
So would you like any potential amendments or comments sent to you-
Yeah, I mean, I'd love that, people send me that, and we'll-
Sooner the better?
Yeah, sooner the better.
Bring a red line?
We'll basically redline them in, and try, if they're duplicates, we'll try to make them one.
Okay. So anybody, if you have any additions or changes that you would like within the next couple of weeks, get those over to the city administrator, and then we can also, any additionals, the night that it's brought back.
And just so you know, anything that has to do with fires and stuff like that, we do have Title XII violations in state law that we're using.
Yeah. I think cross-referencing is good regardless across all, because there's other areas that we, like tobacco use, for example, we have a separate ordinance, but to me, cross-referencing that here would be appropriate, too, just so you can't have people say, "Well, I read the ordinance, I didn't see it," which often happens.
Just get them to me, and we'll make sure that we include them.
Councilor Berman, as a park and rec liaison, would you like to be assigned to this?
I'm happy to, although I think Councilor Johnston was heavily involved also.
Yeah, if it's okay, I would, since I've kind of led the charge on this, I think it would be appropriate that I be the council liaison.
Yep.
Okay, that completes the new business items. Takes us now to item ten, and that is the administrative update. City Administrator Mahenko.
Thank you, Your Honor. First item that I want to just advise the council, if you already know, I announced last week that the appointment of David Pendleton as the interim harbor master effective immediately. Pendleton will serve in this interim role through April of 2025 while continuing his duties as deputy fire chief. And in April of 2025, I will be meeting with David to determine what we want to do going forward on a permanent basis. The other things we have in here is a request for a proposal of a capital finance purchase. City of Saco is soliciting bids from qualified leasing institutions for mini asphalt track paver, but bids will be accepted until 1:00 PM on Wednesday, August seventh. Proposals must be submitted electronically to the Finance Director, Jerry Mathune, at the, jerrymathune@socomaine.org. You can also go on the website to get more information. Of course, tomorrow night is National Night Out, and that will be from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Thornton Academy, and people are certainly invited, and there'll be free food, drinks, games, a number of free activities such as a bounce house, obstacle course, children's games, just to name a few things. So looking forward to tomorrow night for National Night Out. The tax commitment, the mill rate is the tax rate, and the amount of the taxable payable per dollar of the assessed value of property, as used in property tax, one mill equals one dollar in property tax levied per thousand dollars of property assessed value. Pleased to say, the mill rate for this year is fourteen dollars and five cents, as we projected, representing a seventy cent decrease from last year due to budget reductions and additional use of revenue. Assessive property values remain the same this year, except for those adding improvements or other changes. Just, again, I have in here the update on the beach management plan, and working with the county, we are trying to meet with other coastal community managers in the region and are exploring countywide engineering assessments of coastal beaches and dunes. Doesn't mean that we're not going to proceed with our own beach management plan, this would be an augmentation to that and allow us to move forward to try to apply for federal And then some upcoming items you'll see for Monday, August 26th, public hearing, a charter amendment, Section 201 and Section 401, a composition of municipal offices and compensation, public hearing on, as we did tonight, the Community Development Block grant, and so there are other items that we'll be bringing forward for the 26th. And if there's anything that people want before the, on the agenda, certainly contact, of course, the mayor or myself, and I'll make sure I review that with mayor.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments for the city administrator? Okay, that takes us to item eleven, and that's council discussion and comment. Any councilors wishing to speak? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, I just want to revisit the discussion about remote meeting access. And if I understand correctly, I believe we've wired and upgraded the technology in this room and are waiting for a remote meeting policy to come back to council to review that would let citizens participate remotely, and perhaps councilors, too. As someone who's been traveling a lot, I'd be interested in finding ways for people to participate, even when not physically present. So I'd encourage us to bring that back to council.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Takes us to item twelve, and that is executive session. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title One, Chapter Thirteen, Subchapter One, Section 405.6, D, contract negotiations, police, D, contract negotiations, public works, and A, personnel matter.
Motion has been made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Parks. We'll call a vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to enter into executive session passes seven zero. At 8:45, we will be meeting downstairs in the conference room. Motion to enter into executive session passes 7-0. At 8:45, we will be meeting downstairs in the conference room.
Okay, welcome back. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Rule call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to exit executive session passes seven zero at nine thirty-nine. Are there any motions from executive session?
The Saco City Council hereby authorizes the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police for a one-year contract expiring June thirtieth, 2025.
Motion has been made by Councilor Hewitt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by... Councilor Gunn?
I think it was all of us.
Was it?[1527.75][1527.75](laughter) Who wasn't on this side? Was it Council... Nathan, was it you?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilor Johnston.[1540.71][1540.71](laughter)
We'll give it to me.
All right. Motion has been made. Rule call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Is there a second motion?
Yes. Madam Mayor, the Saco City Council hereby authorizes the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the Teamsters Local three forty, Saco Public Safety Support Unit for a three-year contract expiring June thirtieth, 2027.
Motion has been made by Councilor Hewitt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Parks. Rule call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. And is there a third motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The Saco City Council hereby authorizes the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the Teamsters Local three forty, Saco Public Works and Parks Unit for a three-year contract expiring June thirtieth, 2027.
Motion has been made by Councilor Hewitt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Parks. Rule call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, that concludes executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Parks. And rule call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Ha... Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at nine forty-two. Passes seven zero. Thank you everyone and have a great night.